Good evening, thank you for coming up. Welcome to LaPea Community Schools Board of Education Meeting for June 6th. This meeting is called Order. We will begin with the pledge. Mr. Hagel?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hagel. To begin tonight, we have a introduction of Danielle Corbeal, Director of Finance, Mr. Wondry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Danielle, all these people came out.
Yeah, I know.
It's fantastic. It's my honor and privilege to introduce Mrs. Danielle Corbeal, who is our new Director of Finance, taking Mr. Miller's place. As we know, he took the same position down in Hazel Park. Danielle's been with us for several weeks, comes to us direct, most directly and recently from the Waterford School District where she served in the same capacity from 2016 until she joined our team. Prior to that, she was an accounting supervisor with Avondale School District and also has a number of years of experience as a staff accountant and auditor at a private consulting firm. So, we are very happy to bring Danielle on board. And for anyone interested, I know we look to do this with any new employee, she is a proud graduate of Saginaw Valley State University.
That's right.
Bo Carden, that's right. So, on behalf of the COLT team, all of us at ASC and the Board of Education, it's my honor to introduce Danielle. Welcome her to LaPea Community Schools.
Thank you.
Now, save us a lot of money.
Welcome Danielle. Next, we have our presenting school, Zimmer Campus, Mr. Wondry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time, it's my pleasure to introduce Principal Zimmer Campus, Mrs. Amy Maruga, to present on District 02. Actually, I think we're introducing the entire Zimmer staff. Zimmer is here.
Don't worry, we're only talking for ten minutes. Peace is coming, guys. We are talking about Board Goal 2 tonight. We want to talk with you about student engagement. This is the goal that says 100% of K-12 teachers will effectively be facilitators of student-centered learning. So, we've spent lots of time at Zimmer this year talking about what does that mean? What is student-centered learning? And really, the heart of this benchmark is about student engagement. So, we are going to be talking with you about that and we're going to turn it over to Karen Holman to start us off. There we go. That's what Amy just said. Yeah, so, this is about engaging students. One thing that we thought a lot is how before you can engage students, you have to know your students. So, I like to talk about data, which is one of my favorite subjects and some people love it, simple data. This year, our staff has really been reflecting on the idea of being student-centered and what that means and how we can make our decisions based on our kids. And so, early in the year, we came to the conclusion that one thing that we have to do is, in order to be student-centered, we have to know our kids a lot, right? From lots of different aspects. Because the better we know our kids, the better decisions we can make about them. About the instructional practices we use or about how we approach an assessment or when it's time to reteach, we have to know our kids from lots of different places. So, from the very beginning of the year, we've been really intentional about the data that we're using at Zimmer. Because data is not just about how many of our eighth graders pass the understudy, right? That's helpful, but that's not going to help one particular teacher understand her third-hour English class and exactly what they need or the fifth-hour science class and just what they need. We have to drill down more than that. So, instead, every month at our T D, we've spent time thinking about understanding different kinds of data. How to look at a standardized test form and understand what it really means. Or when we talk about subgroups, knowing how those subgroups are made up and what that really means, so that we can be more fluent in the data language. And we're trying to build a better overall picture for our teachers of the students on their rosters right now. But one of my favorite things, and that's what this picture is right here, is a couple weeks ago, we got a chance to meet lots of different teachers at Zimmer to have some data analysis days. And we spent half-day sessions looking at this whole slew of data points for all the students that were brand-new on their second semester roster. We looked at their standardized test history, we looked at how they did last semester in all their classes, what they did on their exams, what their attendance is like, how many tardies they had, so that we could kind of get a better picture of the kids if they were just getting to know at the beginning of the second semester. So, I might have to caveat, data points not made per person, right? We're all more than the sum of our test scores and our grades and our attendance records, but spending time at the beginning of the semester, looking at each child on a kid-by-kid basis, gave our teachers a chance to enter the new semester more ready to notice when a kid might be struggling, more ready to think about the places that they're strong and the places they might need some help, so that we can make better decisions because we know our kids better. So, since we had a picture of math there, we're going to show you a little bit about how we do that with math, right? Okay?
So, our math benchmark says K-12 teachers will apply mathematical practices. And there are eight mathematical practices that are articulated that we're working on applying in all of our math curriculum this year. We, when we look at the math practices, we can easily understand how you use those in math classes, but the question becomes how do you measure that? So, how do you know if it helps or not? By embedding those practices, we can, and through coaching cycles, we can take data at the beginning of the cycle, work on A practice, and take data again and see, okay, this is really working our own, we might want to move to another mathematical practice. So, with that, some of our math coaches and teachers are here and they're going to talk to you about what it's been looking like.
So, as we talk about the mathematical practices and student engagement combined, we thought it would be helpful to kind of give you an opportunity to get your mind situated...
Oh, meaning a turn.
...and what the math might look like as you walk into an eighth-grade or algebra classroom. So, if you would take a moment and a pencil and paper and just consider these questions trying out, the first one is using the Pythagorean theorem to find the x and then using those values to calculate the area on the perimeter. The second one is actually solving a system of equations and the solution is actually a coordinate that shows where the two lines are intersecting. So, if you consider those, and actually, we're just...
Just as nervous as I was in Tennessee.
For maybe just a moment, you know, that raises your awareness of the complexity of what we're asking these young adults to do. As we look at the mathematical practices, we're going to really focus on the first three today and we're going to give you a chance to see what they look like in the classroom. Making sense of problems and persevering in them, reasoning abstractly and quantitatively, and then constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. If you think back to when you maybe learned those concepts, if you can even remember and didn't block it out because of trauma, I mean, it's hard. Now, you were taught in a very traditional way where the teacher modeled and then you did the plug-and-chug individually, not any discussion about it. And so, when we're talking about student engagement, engaging students in mathematical practices, that is a much different look. It's a different kind of classroom, a different kind of teaching and learning. So, the other thing that you're going to notice is the level of complexity, the level of sophistication. So, I know we've had presentations from maybe elementary on mathematical practices and when you have kids at the elementary level, it's really easy to see the engagement. Kids can actually discover different ways to add things together. Everything is very concrete, pictorial, but when you get into this level of math, you can't discover the Pythagorean theorem. You can't guess and check at solving a system of equations. So, it really is much more complex and to get kids to have the confidence to be willing to muck about in some of the information and constructing their arguments, and so, we're going to show you what it actually looks like at the eighth-grade math and algebra.
Hi, I'm Emily Campbell. I do all Math 8 at Zimmer. So, the middle school math program, CMP Connected Mathematics Program, the structure is based on watch, explore, and summarize. So, for the watch, I set the stage, do a little access prior knowledge, hopefully get them engaged, get them excited to work on the problem. Then, for the explore, it's like those four kids or the four guys who are doing the explore, where they're communicating, collaborating, trying to get different strategy, they have very irregular, I don't know if you can kind of see on the screen there, but in a very regular geometric shape, they're trying to find the area and the perimeter of. So, and we can do it through a variety of ways. And there's a young lady there, I don't know if we're going to play the video or not. Okay. There's a young lady there, Jayden, so she's doing the summary portion where her group then is sharing their idea, what they came up with, how they then solved it. So, making some connections and then reaching some possible conclusions on what they did with their problem.
Audio might be a little hard to hear because as a kid, there's a student talking, if you can't see right here under the document camera, and their work is projecting out here and they're just explaining how they made those conclusions. We don't need to watch the whole video. The power of, you know, a student after they all work together and figure it out and realize what they're doing, the student centeredness of getting up and explaining their reasoning and justifying their thinking to each other, it's very powerful student-centered learning.
And I always like it because they can always show me one more way I didn't think of and I'll solve the problem. When we're competing, they can come up with it, so, it's good.
And now, we have Mr. Rutter.
Okay, in these, you can see we're starting in, this is an algebra class, and one of the things that we've been focusing on is getting student engagement up. So, one of the other learning coaches, Andy Roberts, had told me, he read a study that when kids have a whiteboard, they actually jump and get busy and working on problems faster than if they had a pencil and paper. So, we got these big giant whiteboards and it was, it's like a night and day difference just to see them, they just hop to it. Like, you don't have to give them much encouragement to do it, they just get ready to go. So, they're willing to try, they're willing to talk about things, and in their group dynamic, they're actually discussing things, taking turns of who's writing what, and everybody is getting involved. It's actually just kind of, it was surprising to me how much of a difference it made doing that. And in the video, I guess we can play the video or not, we can give it to the backside. But the video is, a student is describing his other, his solution. There are two boards up there. Seeing them like that allows you to pick what you want to show to the class, have different kids present. He's the second one presenting, describing a different solution that he got for a different way.
What is the size of the groups? Small group?
They, it ranges usually between three and five, it depends on, you know, who's there and switch groups around a lot, but usually three to five works well.
Small whiteboards are all in eight groups?
Yeah. If you get too big, then only some are participating. So, like, if it's under five, usually they all can get involved quite well. Another great thing about this is, like, some kids, even if they don't want to share out loud, they're willing to have their board go up there and then someone else is always willing to describe what they think they did to get the solution, which, you know, gets extra thinking about the math and how somebody else came to theirs, even if it's a different result than what they got.
So, you can see these ways of teaching these math classes look a lot different than they probably did when you or even I was in, was in school, the student-centered learning is really powerful and it's alive and well in all of our subject areas in Zimmer. And next up, we have student-centered learning that's not restricted to the classroom. We've got a number of people here to talk about our wonderful opportunity that all of our eighth-grade students have to go to Washington DC. Starting with Mr. Ryan Stevens.
Thank you. I'm back! But I promise, I have no math problems for you, so it's a great deal. And I'm going to keep this really brief, even though I heard Houston's coming at 10. We're going to rack through this as quickly as what I can get in, if I can get the others to show up. I'll be up here, I'll get that national roll up. Because I need my arrows to feel it and I go through. So, on this dramatic pause anyways, I'm going to go ahead with my slides because I'm going to have like 10 minutes worth. There we go, that'll work. All right, so we're going to go. There we go. We're going to just do a really quick overview because as I look at all the people sitting here, I really want to hear from the students and such, so I'm going to get through this really quickly. Our DC trip that we've put on now since 2010, as you see up there, it has grown over the years to affect more students in different ways. Every year, I'm excited to see how the sponsors have changed the trip to include other items and just make the trip better for students as students. The board goals, I'm excited too because I listened to all the intellectual engagement going on in the classroom, and I think that's part of, part of the best aspects of the DC trip, is how our teachers bring this back and present it to the students, and that increases their intellectual engagement in the classroom through our high-quality curriculum that you see. You know, we moved it from the spring to the fall with that purpose in mind, because it was used as a capstone event before when it was going in the spring. Now, the teachers can use this throughout the year, and you'll see the teachers step up here, going to explain it much more eloquently than what I ever could. But a couple reasons why we did that, along with being able to utilize it in class all year, we saved money, a lot more students to go because of cost for moving from there. We were allowed to go into more locations because the lines were wrapped all around National Archives when we got there, we could actually get on there and go see more things. So, it's exciting. For the efficacy of the educational field trips, this is a touchy subject, I'll be honest with you. I did research on this and when you look at this, it's hard to put a number to field trips, because one is a field trip. Is it a one-hour excursion to the movie theater? Is it a five-day event where we're going through all the different places that they can utilize for the rest of the year? So, when you looked at Addie's research, it scored 10, or I'm sorry, 100 above athletics. We know how impactful athletics is, so this means impactful as well. It wasn't all the way up on top of the list, but it was still 100 above the athletics. So, I'm excited to hear from these guys. I'm going to introduce Mrs. Wolfher. She is going to come on up and explain how it relates to our social studies.
Fortunately, I teach U.S. history. So, what's amazing about that is the fact that this is my curriculum. We are immersed in the U.S. history 8 curriculum from the moment we step off the bus. We're walking the fields of Gattysburg. I mean, our students are able to see parts of the enactment of the Civil War. They have guides there who are so knowledgeable and filled, the kids get, some of the kids, and what's really cool about this trip is you got time. Some students might be extremely excited, like I am, and bored, want to vassle, while other students are getting super excited about getting the songwings and being able to see the museums and the art, while other students are like, no, I want to go to Mount Burns, I want to see where George Washington once lived, and other students are saying, who, go here, I want to see the White House, let's go first to the White House, or I want to see the U.S. Capitol. Mrs. Wolfher, I am so excited, do you think we're going to see first of Barack Obama or Donald Trump? What names are we going to see? We've had so many different experiences throughout our history in DC, but I want to be honest with you, it's not just the U.S. history, it's not just the social studies curriculum, it's the cultural fusion. Many of our students are born and raised in LaPea, and I'm born and raised in LaPea. So, until you actually go to DC and you walk along and you hear people talking in Russian, Japanese, and British, you hear and you're like, what? I just want to talk in English, but doesn't sound anything like us. It's the cultural fusion of all the different foods they get exposed to, because believe it or not, on this trip, they get this wonderful voucher where they oftentimes have 27 different actions and they can try Indian cuisine, and they can try, and they have all those cultural experiences that money must take for granted and don't even realize that, hey, they're not aware of it, and they're so excited about that. But, again, another important thing to do with this is, some students, that's their trip of a lifetime. Others, it sparks in them this passion, this drive of wanting to get back, of wanting to see more, of wanting to learn more. And it's, what's really cool with them in U.S. history is, for the rest of the year, it's constantly making those comparisons. I mean, don't remember, when we start to talk about the empty swamp field for two acres between the U.S. Capitol and the White House, the kids are like, this didn't look like that. Mrs. Wolfher, it didn't look like that at all, because the connection to the constant seeing of today versus that then, it's amazing. So, I'm now going to talk to another Mr. Sweeney, who's going to bring in the DLA connection, as well as often things that we do with the product, to make sure that...
All right. We don't always think of the DC trip when we think of the DLA or probably the United States, but rarely we can go aside and we don't bring it up. Just this week, Monday, I introduced, I knew it's a nonfiction reader, I'm sorry, historical fiction reading, but I challenged on Monday to choose their own nonfiction book. So, went to the library, we spent about half hour looking for books, and they came back and we came back with about 15 minutes left in class and they were just buzzing, you know, they're not always really buzzing after they're back to the library. I was going to have, we were quietly for a while, but I'm like, you know what, they want to share. So, each kid, I was each kid, like, what book did you choose and why? And they were all super, they don't always get super excited about stuff, but they were all super excited to share what book they chose. I can't tell you how many of them chose things based on what we saw in DC. I had a student choose a book called FBI. Why? Well, I went to the FBI museum at night at DC and it was so awesome, I had to go on there more. And we were like, where are your four rooms? And they're like, yeah, I didn't really understand the four rooms, but I hope I can understand it more. And, you know, that was just an everyday experience with our class. And again, we're, the story prediction is going to be about the Holocaust, so we talked about that. And one of the things that's going to, that's going to happen is, the young girl that married the protagonist in our book is a young Jewish girl, she was captured by the Nazis and they put her in a training car and she's there for three days. And for a lot of kids, that's an emotional thing for now, but the kids who've actually ventured the Holocaust Museum and been in one of those training cars, I mean, they, you know, I ask them to, I try not to explain, say, what was that car like? You know, you can smell the cedar wood or whatever the wood was, it's a very, very pungent smell being in there. And it's, and it's dark and it's just, it's like moist, I, like, they use the words, and it really, really is, and it really provides an extra sense of empathy for them, for the ones that've been there, it brings a whole new experience for them now. And if they have time to DC, they don't get that. So, again, there's not a week goes by we don't come back to the trip. I'm done.
So, yeah, so, I'm here today more as a parent. I have two students here at LaPea Schools, and I've been really fortunate, they've gone on so many trips. So, just with the two kids so far, I've had them do University of Wisconsin with the Problem Solvers. We've gone to Traverse City for the LOC, Mackinac, they played at Cedar Point, I had a daughter that was at, it was a junior college for the whole week, I think it was eight, if I'm not mistaken, but they get to all over. But the one we talked about a lot is the DC one. So, both of my kids were able to go and some of the things that stood out, you know, like these guys were saying, it goes right to the school, but then it goes back to our personal stuff too. Like, my daughter wrote the most beautiful essay so she could lay the wreath at Arlington. My father had passed away a few months before she wrote her essay, he's been not back, and it was just awesome, and she's like, yeah, I need to go and lay this wreath now, and I'm doing this for my grandpa. And then we talk about the Bormoreros, we walk around, we see the Korean one, and all of a sudden, they're asking questions, you know, for our own personal family, oh, well, I know the great-grandparents in the Korean War, what do you know about that? And then we can talk about those kinds of things. You know, these are kinds of trips, I can't take my family out. I wish I could, I wish I had the money to take a family of four and do tours and guides and busing and hotel. I'd say, hey, kid, you can't send all of us, right? You can't take the whole family. So, these are the kinds of things, you know, that they come back. I was there when I watched my daughter run up the Lincoln Memorial, because that's somebody she had always admired since as little as I can remember, and she's racing up the steps now, and I'm like, gosh, this is so cool for them to see. Natural History Museum, my youngest daughter was really into that this year, we came home and now she's reading about the whole diamond. Hey Dad, did you know this about the whole diamond? Of course, I lied, I'm like, yeah, I knew that. But I'll tell you a little bit more if you just want to hear more information. Just to see, like, they were saying, all the kids seem to go there and find that one thing, right? The Holocaust Museum is a bus leader, it's kind of my thing, I like to make sure they read this one quote when they leave, and I wish I should have written it on my notes over here, but it's the one about, you know, nobody spoke up for me when they came for me and then when they came, nobody was up to talk for me. But that's the kind of stuff, you know, that they have to see and experience, because they just leave the room where you listen to actual Holocaust survivors, you read the quote, and then they can apply that to other things in life. I actually just kind of came up here more to say, you know, anything, thanks, you know, the kids get to do these kinds of things. I'm excited, I've got a daughter who hopefully is going to go to New York next year for her seat, don't tell her, I'd be a little surprised for her. These are the things we can do, right? With our kids, and they can go out and they can experience. She's in the drama, now she's going to go out, she's going to hopefully see a Broadway play, and that's pretty cool stuff. So, those are just a couple of memories that I got from the students, or my own personal kids when I was there. If you ever want to see pictures, come on over. We must have a date close to 385 or just probably 300. The other pictures as well, if you'd like to see us.
My name is Jason Hay, I'll bring you a picture of this trip. So, I'm here tonight to discuss the importance of school field trips. I've called LaPea Home for 21 years, we raised four kids here, one of them graduated several years ago, became a marine, I have a daughter that is graduating this year, I have a junior that's about to become a senior, a freshman, and as a parent, for better or worse, I think you'll back me up on this, so, we've been taking a pretty active role in our children's education in life, they don't tend to care for it, but, you know, we do everything from being active in the schools, ETOs, EDA's, chaperoning field trips, sitting in on ass horse, which is awesome. I mean, I was even crazy enough, my whole five were on the school board. Again, I honestly say that every trip I've been a part of has had an incredible amount of educational value to these kids. I'm talking trips like fourth-grade field trip to the U.P., to the Detroit Zoo, the Henry Ford, Skinner Lake, and multiple trips to DC, along with others that I can't even remember. Regardless of which trip I was on, it was exciting to see the thirst for knowledge the students have. More exciting is seeing them learn and watching their eyes light up as they learn something new. I can say this from my heart, because on most of the trips, I was a chaperone to other people's kids, not my own, so, and I'm not biased towards, it's awesome because it was my kids. I was learning from four other kids that aren't mine, I never met them before the trip, so, it's truthful. Every trip that I attended was carefully selected and planned in parallel with topics that were currently being taught in the curriculum. There's a huge amount of educational value on these trips. I know, I played a lot of sports, I got hit in the head a lot, I learned pretty good on hands-on, you know, I, you can instruct on a board in front of me, talk out of a book, you throw me in front of artifacts and have a guide telling me historical data, I'll take a heck of a lot more out of that than I ever would in a classroom. And then when you get back to the classroom, oh, now it's all clicking, I get it. So, of all the children I encountered on these trips, they all took in tremendous amount of enjoyment and knowledge from these trips. I run into these kids through the schools, in the store, we still laugh and joke about it. They tell me, oh, remember when we learned about this or about that or the whole thing, which is awesome. In my, in my opinion, educational trips are an integral part of the educational process. You cannot replace the memories and education the kids receive. You cannot replace the memories and education the kids receive on these trips by exclusively instructing from a classroom. The hands-on knowledge is irreplaceable and leaves a lasting impression and knowledge. Thank you for listening.
I just want to do a quick introduction myself. My name's Sam Howard, I am currently sophomore at LHS and I actually went on this trip just a couple of years ago. First, I want to thank all the members of the board and Mrs. Wolford and Mrs. Sweeney and all the teachers that helped actually allow us this opportunity to go and to address you tonight and even go to DC. You know, I just want to take a few minutes to talk about my experience and I'm going to try to keep it short because if pizza's coming, I'm hungry. You know, I've heard a lot of people talk about, you know, sometimes you don't get as much education from trips like these and preparing for this in the past week, I've been talking to students and to my own friends and peers who went with us and the majority of them agreed that they learned more in that trip than they learned up until that point in school. And I'm not trying to bash our teachers. Sorry, sorry. But, you know, when you get to go hands-on and stuff, I like that kind of stuff. I like to go and see the artifacts and to walk through where Washington lived and just to see, just to feel that emotion and you just know that this is where great people actually walk and live. And I just think, to me, that's the greatest thing ever. I say it's wonderful because, you know, you're learning so much and you don't really get to, in traditional class, you don't really get to go and do that thing all the time. And I'm really glad that the Pierce Community Schools offers that and that they allow us to go and have that trip. As when I was preparing for this, I'm currently in AP Government Politics with Mr. Rodriguez and I was talking to him about it and he was saying that he really liked the trip because it's more educational overall. Yeah, you have fun, you go and you get to eat good food and you really get to learn, but it's really just something where you can come together as a class and just learn about each other and learn about the history and our government, which is just an amazing experience. When I went, I was beyond excited to go because I'm kind of like Mrs. Wolford and I really, I'm into that stuff, I like that stuff. My brother had gone just a few years before me and he said it's the greatest trip ever. He absolutely loved it. I went to, with my twin, I'm sure he'd love being called out. But we both really enjoyed it. And because I had an interest in politics and I hope one day maybe to become president or something like that, I really, it's a long shot, but I really enjoyed that sort of thing. And I gained so much from that trip just to be able to learn. You know, I still to this day remember walking through Ford Theater with President Lincoln was shot and I remember the Holocaust museum and there was a hall of shoes that was confiscated from Auschwitz, I believe, and you might have to correct me later. And it's just the haunting reality of that period, really just the emotion that it brings you, you're just drawn to silence because you can't really say, you can't find the words to accurately describe how you feel walking through there. And I just, I really enjoyed, you know, the quiet planes at the Battle of Gettysburg, just being able to be in that moment and to say, so many years ago, this is where these important things that have built this country started and where they ended. As Mr. Rex was talking about, when I went, I actually had the honor to present a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown with a couple of my fellow students, I'll give them a shout out, Cherry Dundas, Morgan Castle, Morgan Coulter. And I remember the silence around that moment and as you're standing there, once you lay the wreath, they play taps and it's just so, the emotion is just so much that you don't have the words to say. You just have to stand there and just think, I'm in this moment, these are the people that helped me get where I am. And I really just enjoyed that. And I remember the museums, the Library of Congress, the really, really interesting museum that I seen was called the Museum, where it was all about specific news things and I really liked that because it's not your typical, here's an artifact, it's behind a glass wall, you can't go near it, you know, you got to get more close to it and really see it. I remember standing outside of the Pentagon at the nine eleven memorial and even shedding a tear when reading the name of Dana Falkenberg, who's one of the youngest people to die that day. It was so just emotional, I'm even getting a little now just thinking about it because you don't think about that's ever going to happen to you or to your country and then when it does, you really just feel the emotion that's involved with it. So I really enjoyed that. I remember seeing the Magna Carta, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, just right after we'd begun to learn about it in class and then you get to actually see it and say, wow, this is not just something in a textbook, it's actually here in front of me. And I just think that it was just the greatest thing. I think in all honesty, it was my favorite memory, only beaten by maybe one or two things and I'd have to sit here and think about them to tell you what they were. So I think I've taken up enough of your time, but I'd like to just say that it's such a great trip to be on and I'm so glad I got that honor and that privilege. And now I'd like to turn it over to Kelly Odean, who is a senior at LHS.
So my name's Kelly, I am a senior at LHS. In an eighth grade, I had the amazing opportunity to travel to Washington DC with my peers from school. The class trip to DC was one of the best ways personally for me to experience history and the arts outside of the school walls. Our nation's capital is truly wonderful and it's an inspirational city where you can feel part of something that's way bigger than just yourself, as well as give students a chance to travel outside of the pier when they otherwise couldn't. We saw as many monuments and historical documents written by our founding fathers as we could each day. We also got to pay tribute to soldiers who made extreme sacrifices for our country. Even when we came back from Washington DC, I was able to truly understand and picture documents and places we discussed in our U.S. history class. The trip is so important for students like myself to be able to experience this opportunity so you can expand their connection and knowledge with the real world.
Hello, I'm Laura Stubbman, I am a senior at Pierce High School. The philosopher George Santayana once said, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Years ago, I learned that history is what binds the past, the present, and the future. In eighth grade, like most students, I had the incredible opportunity to travel with my fellow classmates to Washington DC. For many of those students, it was a once-in-a-lifetime trip. For me, it gave me a glimpse of my future. I want now and more than ever after the trip to work in politics and actually work with PC. I never would have thought a school trip could actually do that for me. It also opened my, my eyes to the world outside of the pier, which I think, as kids, we have a hard time dealing. You know, the Arlington Cemetery and the Declaration of Independence, even just walking through the historical halls is an experience you just can't get from a classroom, no matter how great your features are. And even when we got back to school, like everyone said, and back to our desks and back to our textbooks, we were able to connect those things back and I think that's a really important part of it. And there's also a cultural legacy, which, I don't know if you guys know, but it's something that every student looks forward to when they hit eighth grade, it's really the turning point and only because that I've experienced, I really know the educational purpose behind it. But I don't think you could ever really recreate that connection that you make with both your peers and your teachers and also the curriculum that you're learning. But nonetheless, this trip is more than just a trip, across the teeth and down to the eyes of our social studies education. It builds all of the relationships yet again and most importantly, it's something that we will remember for good.
So with that, we're done, but we just wanted to show you, you know, student engagement inside classrooms, which is what we do every day, but it was important to us to show you what student engagement looks like outside those walls too. So hopefully we've done that tonight. Thanks for your attention.
And we would like to invite you, if anyone, honestly, we say this every single time, I know about fifty percent of you had the opportunity at one point to come with us, but sincerely, we save spots. So if any one of you decides, hey, you want to come, we will give you the true experience. You can buy that party. No one will tell you. Our most recent victim was secretly. So by the way, if you ever want to, in any ways, go back and experience it, you know, if you're more than, more than welcome.
Thank you. Kim has been a more effective employee since she rejoined. Which was, was a har, was a really high bar to me because she's already very effective.
The current trip to Washington DC is one of the best experiences that we can offer the kids here. I went on that trip twice, sometimes with two different children and everything that was out here is one hundred percent true. One of the best trips a child can go on a trip. Even though you don't get to chaperone your own kids, you get to know classmates.
You get to that, you get to that. Me too, since two thousand and ten, me too. The hate comes with the wife. So you would have chaperoned one child.
And they don't want to be together.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move to the public comment. We do have a public comment first. Begin with the statement from the board. A board meeting is a meeting of our school district commissioners that is held in the public. It is not a public meeting. The board sets aside time for public comment. Public comment is not an open forum and requests presenters address the board. The board will not respond to those making public comments, may direct a superintendent to follow up with the presenters. That lack of response should not be construed as agreement nor disagreement with those comments as merely the board staying in compliance with the National Leadings Act and posted agenda for this meeting. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment above. Ask you to please keep your comments to five minutes or less and we will begin with Mr.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and regardless of wherever we come, whatever points we have, when you see the results of these, these kids and hear them out there talking, I'm very proud. For those who don't know, been involved in the district for many, many years, both my kids went through the schools, did great. My daughter just graduated college last year, she's now working R and D in one of, one of the hottest medical companies around, doing some really good stuff. Went on, volunteered for a lot of different things over the years and just I have a lot of respect for this, you know, this district, was on one of the committees that brought this bond right here, which I believe is one of the best things that I ever did is we did. But we're kind of coming at crossroads here, I'm looking and reading in the paper, been seeing a number of bond proposals and unfortunately, I, I, I look, I was here, I was at the board meeting in two thousand and five and presented seventy-five million dollar bond. I was here at the oh-six meeting and we presented one hundred and fifteen million dollar bond, which both went on big. I was here on seven when we had the bond ultimately passed and for those of you that are here, you know that I was part of, worked hard. We needed, we needed middle school buildings, it was very, very worthwhile and the public agreed to that. They were very, they were up, they realized that we were working hard, we were trying to make do just as they were. Since the years passed, we're, we're looking at things that maybe we could have done better without signing any, and it's not to blame anybody, you know, there's things we could have done better that we would not have maybe made some of the mistakes that we did. You look at the numbers on buildings that are closed or closed and sold, going to be closed that you're looking at someplace, depending on ultimately what figures from we hear later on tonight, you're looking at anywhere from seven to eight, maybe nine million dollars, that's principal dollars. You dress that out with the like of the bond, you're looking at hell with that. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money in taxpayers, money that is not going to be used for anything good. I'm looking at the proposal, this bond is, it's great, it's a great proposal and keep in mind, I'm not faulting anybody for this. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to say that I don't, that there are other options. I don't think necessarily that, you know, that it's going to be the fault. I want you folks, I want Mr. Wong to do, keep thinking of good things to do for his schools. But in this case, again, we're looking at a lot of money that's been lost, we're also looking at buildings that we have. We've got, you know, we've got Lynch Elementary, between sinking fund and bond money, three point seven million dollars. We've got Turo, four point seven million dollars, again, between sinking fund and it. We've got Maple Grove that we also put money into, that was currently being used by some other folks, but that again, just had a boiler put in in the lake, it's a brand new boiler. When we closed at elementary, we built six classrooms onto Lynch Elementary. Those six classrooms figured, I'm figuring around thirty kids, that's average classroom, cost one point two million dollars in oh-six. Now assuming that number were to carry out, say it even tripled, we have some good elementary buildings, we could do substantial things with some elementary buildings that are in good shape and we pump some money into. The folks that are Maple Grove, we're going to have buildings to sell, they can very easily buy and work themselves into another building. But when you're looking at this, you know, and I would gladly support, you know, aside from the forty-two million dollars, we're still outstanding from that fifty-seven million dollar bond, I would support doing something else, putting a brand new high school in place. That's now, when we're, we're focusing on our problems, we're addressing issues for our kids or for our elementary kids, not the high school. I've heard that she wants to close them all the times and then he agrees, East End grade shit happens. The Pierce High School is in very good shape, not much to have to do, but she's got labs in there that are going to have to be a poker reef up to be able to use for her first and fourth graders. I don't know what costs is on that. Again, that was bond money, that was some of the last bond money that we spent. So ultimately, I'm looking at that and I'm seeing that we've got these elementary buildings and we have spent substantial money that need, you know, that we could do other things with. I'm asking myself, you know, if we add six classrooms to three of those and I've got the staffs, I'm sure you guys already have these there, but you got the staffs to know how much the school will hold, that would easily take care of the excess that we need for the elementary. We could still sell off some of the stuff that we have and we're not going to be soaking the taxpayers because I will tell you, in my own house, what sold for me was when I was reading the, the proposal, it was in the paper, after my kids have seen the videos, I'm going to get outvoted three to one when this comes up for vote, whether it's the eighty-nine or whether it's a hundred and two. I'm going to get outvoted. And that's from kids that have gone through this district, you know, so that's my own house. So I would encourage you, it's not, I would encourage you to think about this. And again, this is, I, I, I understand, you know, that you guys have to do what you think is right, but as a taxpayer, I would rather see, I could get on board with, with putting, putting some money into, into upgrading and doing some stuff with our best buildings that we have, selling off the ones we don't need. And that's, I'm sure not going to, again, one point two billion, it won't be paid for the condition at Lynch, again, that was in two thousand and six. So whatever those numbers will be modified up to, something like that seems to be a lot better way to spend money than to ask people to build a new high school so we can accommodate our elementary kids in the old high school.
Thank you, Mr. Gubek. I'm Mrs. Wong, thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret? Tompkins? Sorry, Margaret. I'm Margaret Tompkins, I have a senior at Pierce High School and a freshman at the end. I wanted to address the board tonight about the new plans for the redistricting of our schools. I'm speaking now as a member of the community who will no longer have children when this case about. A little flunked about that. I will be one of those childless households that have no vested interest in what happens, save for money what is best for all of the children in our community. I will be paying increased taxes for children that are no longer mine, just as many of you have done for my children. These children will be the kids who will be our doctors, our nurses, our police officers, our firefighters, they will be our teachers, our builders, our engineers, and our laborers. They will be our IT professionals, our professors, and our entrepreneurs. They will be what makes our community a better place to live. I have been involved in this process since the very beginning. I have attended building pack meetings, district pack meetings. I have attended building pack meetings, district pack meetings, focus panels, and public forums. I have listened as the plan has morphed into what it is today. What, I can't tell you what an amazing experience that was. It's been so interesting to see how what we thought was a sure thing at the beginning was changed by an email from a parent or a community member who said, "What if we do this?" And I remember Matt saying, "I didn't even want to open that email." So I was like, "We have this all figured out," but we didn't. The fact that our administrators even take the time to listen and consider those out-of-the-box options is encouraging. I was part of the redistricting that happened the last time around. My kids were in second and fifth grades when Maple Grove Elementary was closed. As hard as it was to lose my local school, I chose to be interested in what was best for all of our children. I chose to allow my kids to believe that this was a new adventure and there was nothing to fear. This time, they will not be affected by the changes as a whole. But for those parents who are afraid of change, the kids generally do just fine unless the parents have issues. I'm jealous of those who are going to have kids that are going to benefit from this and don't have any more kids. I believed then and I believe now that it is time for a district to come up with something that can sustain the education of our children for the next 20, 30, or 50 years. I love the thought of our elementary students having science labs, music rooms, choir rooms, separate gymnasiums rather than the cafeteria. All will provide the teachers with the ability to more easily collaborate with each other and share age-appropriate technology and supplies without having to provide them times five. The resources that can be shared along with easing the difficulty of keeping class sizes manageable is one of the most important parts of this plan. I think being able to design a high school that takes advantage of the different kinds of education that are out there is key to our children's success. More project-based learning and spaces specifically built for these programs is vital to their continued education. We are a district of all sorts of innovations and great ideas. We are a district of programs that are secondary to none. We have highly decorated music programs, kids taking AP classes and dual-enrolling, and interventions for even those that are struggling. We have world-class robotics teams and a football team that was pretty awesome this year, too. I can only imagine that this will increase our ability to provide even more. I personally want to thank you for always having our children and our community in mind when you come to these decisions.
Thank you. Emily Wenzel Miles.
Hi, I'm Emily. I am here tonight as a first-grade teacher. I teach at Murphy Elementary, but I'm also a parent of a fourth grader at Murphy. And not only that, I went to school here. I live at LaPierre West, and my whole family has gone to school here. So I have pretty deep ties to the school district. I've really thought a lot about what I wanted to say here. It's a difficult subject for some people, but there's nothing more important than planning for the future of our children. I'm really proud of the work that we've done here at LaPierre Community Schools. I'm proud of the education that we provide to our students. Not only that, I've moved out of this district and chose to bring my son here because I believe in what we do. I believe in what happens here. My son attends Murphy, and we love everything about Murphy. We love everything about our elementary school. There's a part of me that's obviously really sad to think about Murphy not being there anymore. So I thought about that and reflected on that a little bit. And I thought about what I really loved about our school. And when I thought about it a lot, it's the people and the experiences that we've had there that we love. It's not being at Murphy. It's that we love the people and the things that he's been able to do here. And then I really think about what it is that I want for my students and for my son. And I want more. I want more than we have given them. I want more of what we've already offered and the things that we've worked hard to achieve. But I want more than that for him. And I want more than what we can offer right now, the facilities that we have and the infrastructure that we have. But I wanted to also talk a little bit about, as an elementary teacher and parent, I know firsthand how important our elementary schools are to people. I know that they're important to families, and I know they're important to the staff. They become a part of our family. I mean, I, tonight, have seen people here that I haven't seen in a while, and it feels like going home, right? Like, you see these people, and it's important. But the feelings of loss that I have just don't outweigh the benefits of what we can do. So I don't want to diminish the feelings of loss that people are having. But in order to provide our students with the best education possible, it's time for change. I want to say that change is always hard, because I have gone through the closing of other buildings while I've been here at the district. I've worked at Ala, I worked at Abra, I worked at Hadley. Started to think I was maybe a little bit bad luck. But I actually used to say that all the time. I was like, "Oh, I think we're good with Murphy." So every time we were faced with change, it was difficult. But it, I, someone just said, you know, I think honestly it was more difficult for the parents than it ever was for the kids. It was difficult for the adults. We looked at it, but look at what we've achieved since then. I mean, the whole idea of one look here is amazing. Our students have the opportunity to be a part of something truly remarkable. And I really believe that unified, we can come together to accomplish great things and demonstrate the power of a unified community. We have the opportunity to be one look here. Our top priority should always be to continue to provide a safe and learning environment and a top-quality educational experience for our students. Our students deserve to walk the halls of our schools and experience a safe, clean, and modern environment. I support the future of LaPierre Community Schools, and I support the bond proposal. Even though there are parts of me that are sad, I know what is best for our kids. I believe we have the opportunity to invest in the future of our students. We are engaging in a process to play for the future of our school and our community. Our goal is always for our students to be competitive in the job market and to have a bright future for themselves. We want that for our community. In order to do that, we have to make an investment in our schools. I'm very hopeful that the board and the community will support what I consider to be necessary for our school district to continue to be successful and bright. I believe that the rewards we'll achieve in the decades to come will be well-worked investments we make today. It's our time. It's our responsibility to do what's right for our kids. So, thank you.
Kim Dalton?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Dalton. My family and I are survivors of the LHS merger. I'm a 20-year veteran, LHS, and a third community school bus rider, and a parent of two graduates from LHS. Who I must say, thank you all for putting up with the Dalton children. I understand the community's concern about the change and the loss of their elementarys. I myself lost Ala and Seton. I was the first to go through kindergarten, through sixth grade at Seton, and it was sad to see it go, but we survived. Since I've been a driver with the district, we've lost six of our elementary schools. Our district is changing, and the numbers don't lie. Each one of our elementary schools is amazing, and they offer so much to their students. But could you imagine if the best of the best was under one roof? I get to see things that a lot of people in the district don't see. I see a student here at Turrell that I think to myself, "Oh, my gosh, that child would benefit from Parker's bus." Not everybody knows what Parker is or who she is, but boy, she's got away with her students, and even her grown students that now ride my bus are, I know how to deal with them because Parker's giving me some insight. Could you imagine if all the fifth graders could go to Port Huron and ride the Appaloosa? Because only Turrell does that. Or if all the fourth graders could go to Meadowbrook at Christmas time and see Christmas Carol? Only Murphy does that. I have looked into our runs for the future. Linda and I talked about it quite extensively. Our elementary runs would actually be smaller because we would have more drivers. We would have a two-tier system, so that would make our timeframes a little bit different. Obviously, I'm very proud of LaPierre Community Schools, and I hope soon enough that we can see the benefits of the changes that this district's our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Smith? We will move on to the reports. And the board report, and only report, by Mr. Gebach.
Hello. We met February 5th at 3 o'clock. And Mark Raider, who's on the budget development process. Again, this is just a preliminary outlook as we are still gathering budget information, he informed us. He also reviewed the resolution relating to preliminary qualifications of the proposed bond issue, which states that the total amount of bonds to be issued to funding the proposed project shall not be more than 94.9 million. The committee wasn't in consensus to approve the resolution. It will go before the board tonight for final approval. The jury that's three courts out.
Mr. Gebach, any questions? Presentation of this budget.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As part of our normal budget development process, this is the second installment for board presentations that relates to the information and forecast. Mr. Raider will be the primary speaker, although members of the call and myself will interject and share information necessary for the board's understanding of this complex topic. So, Mr. Raider.
Good evening. Thank you. Been a busy 24 hours. But we finally have some good moves. And forecasting goes for us, starts in the spring, and then goes fast and fierce until June. So part of it goes in our forecasting, as the board has heard, but the benefit of the members of the audience, lots of our local controlled data points in Walmano is to be the biggest, since its foundation allowance is based on that, and it's our primary revenue. Along with our rollover, those rollover projections really attend and mean the rollovers of students, trying to predict the teachers in particular buildings. Because the board knows, even if we have to find the students, it's not even across all elements of our operations. We have to find for that our estimates and losses of students. We had roughly on the February count, a loss of 50 students from this past fall, which is pretty typical of a normal year for us. So doesn't raise a red flag necessarily at this point, because that's a normal trend line for us. But we're assuming they have to be our roundup, I believe, next week. Ms. Kendall?
One week.
What?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And that will be our first insight into the incoming kindergarteners for next year and our estimates for that. Speaking of economic variables, boy, those move every day. In the last 24 hours, let's see, the state budget that the governor proposed for the general fund is 400 and some odd pages, and the school aid fund is 226 pages. No, I have not looked at all 600-plus pages in the last 24 hours. But the devil's in the details. And so there are other experts in our various professional organizations that will digest those, go through, summarize them, and give us a Cliff Notes version, because it's important. A word or two can get changed, the funding element can get changed, and it's in the legalese of the budget, not necessarily of what we understand in the paper. State budget development process, it's late this year. I already forewarned the board of that before. Government usually presents second and third week in February. His or her budget, and it didn't come out until last night. Actually, it was released about noon yesterday, and she delivered it last night. So the good news is, there is some good continued economic information for school districts. The bad news is, we're trying to understand what's tied part to it, because of course, nothing comes free, and there are some movements of dollars between the school aid fund and the general fund. So time will tell when we see the Senate and the House version coming up. Put this slide in just so you can see the complexity. Most of those circles, there's about an 80-page document that supports this, all the legislative mandates that causes both the House, the Senate, and the governor, the executive branch, to have to go through that circular process, the budget. The yellow circles, as we've seen, the revenue in January, First Regime Conference, and the more important one at the bottom, third week in May. Third week in May cuts it tight, as we all know, trying to make sure we can have good information about the budget by June 30th, because that's by law by July 1st, or it has to adopt the budget. So we're hopeful that now that the governor has put out her proposed budget, we will soon see the Senate and the House. So we can try and wait and see, we'll see here shortly some of the numbers. Are hers on the high side, are hers in the middle, hers on the low side. Because we have three branches that will balance those out. This chart shows you that the funding, the foundation allowance, has been shrinking between the minimum and the maximum. So we are at the minimum, we're at the, currently at the far right-hand side of the slide, my right-hand side, 78, 71, and the basic is 84.09. There's some confusion on that. Most districts, about 400 and 550 traditional districts are at that 78, 71 per student funding. The rest of the districts move up towards that 84.09, and there's about 55 districts that are above that, known as the whole carpus districts. So the good news is, you can see, since Prop A, which we're in the 25th year, we are finally in the last year seeing a closing of the gap with the proposed increase by the governor this year. We're seeing that that gap now between the minimum and the basic is less than $500. So that is good news for us. So let's look at what the governor proposed yesterday. Lots on the slide, so I'll go fairly slow. If the board has questions, don't hesitate to interrupt me. So the foundation allowance is going to increase from 78, 71, $8,051, $180 increase for the bottom, $120 for the top. So if the board remembers for about the last 10 years, we've had a 2X formula. So the 2X, this formula is a 1.5X formula. So it's a little change. And we kind of thought some changes were going to come with the school funding proposal with this new administration and legislation. So it's still good news, because it's $180 at the bottom, it's $120 at the top. State reimbursement for special ed. This one, I think, caught everyone off guard, and we're still trying to understand what impact this will mean. So currently, there's qualified expenditures. LaPierre has about $2.8 million. We submit, we get 28 cents on a dollar in funding. For those board members, and those who remember history, Durant lawsuit was some 25-plus years ago. That was, the state wasn't funding fully special ed, and the result was this 28 cents on every dollar. They're now raising it to 32, but there's some strings tied to it. Weighted average, are the students qualified, and we're waiting to figure out what exactly that means. So not necessarily sure we're guaranteed to see an increase in our special ed allocation.
Does the question on that is, so is that earmarked from the foundation, or is that in addition to?
You always get the foundation first. So if your special ed costs exceed the foundation allowance for a student, you get your foundation allowance, and then you'll get some additional. So it's not a guarantee that all districts get additional, such as 52 special ed. Your foundation allowance fulfills that full liability for the state, and that's all you get is your foundation.
And the additional is going to have an increase, their proposal is going to increase.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Increase in at-risk, so we know that is the Section 31A, moving it up about $174. That is good news. What we will see is what, is there any rules tied to that and/or any new exclusions as to what we could use as appropriate expenditures? Because the board knows we can't just move stuff out of the general fund into at-risk and supplant in sacred general fund expenditures and put it into a funding source. So that's good news. It's quite a bit of, if you see later in the slide additional dollars to us, but that also means we'll have additional expenses that will match that. But it will give us opportunity to provide additional service standards to students. Career technical ed, we kind of knew that was coming. Currently, we get about $8,000. That 487 per pupil is really doubling of what it is currently. So we're estimating we're going to see about $9,000 or about $18,000 online item and a revenue for that. Again, that one's tied to the weighted average. Again, that one's tied to the weighted average. So, here comes the kind of tricky part. So, there's extra funding, $507 million, the governor's proposing for the school aid fund. But she's also taking $500 million that's been going from the school aid fund to higher ed. There's actually $908 million this current year, $408 goes to community colleges, $500 goes to universities. She's going to move the $500 million out of the school aid fund back into the general fund. And this is freeing up basically current school aid fund dollars. So, it's not like we're getting infusion of new dollars to the school aid fund, but it is good news to us that we're finally getting some relief out of that bleeding going to the universities out of the school aid fund. And there was a positive balance of $400 million in the January Revenue Conference, so there was already, you'll see where I have a $100 increase, it was based on this $400 million was accessed. So, we already knew the school aid fund was healthy going into fiscal planning, we just didn't know how healthy it was going to be. And then, as you see, the quote that I took from her speech, she's calling these investments increases the first step in implementing weighted per pupil funding system, and it's really tied to the statewide initiative study that came out last year.
Just to make sure, though, this still has to be looked at by the Senate, by the House?
Oh, we haven't seen any.
This is only the governor's report.
This is only the governor's report, we haven't seen any hints.
If you don't have a clue, we're probably going to end up somewhere in the middle.
Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower, it's, they'll be higher and lower on each one of these, and we'll see where the negotiations go. You'll see when I get to some of the other elements here a bit. So, if I quantify this for us, as LaPierre schools, what does this mean? $180 per pupil, about $800, $150 more in revenue in our foundation allowance. Special ed, as you guys missed, killer, roughly $110, $115,000 if all of our current special ed qualifying expenses were qualified, that percent increase will apply to it, and then the career technical. So, roughly $1 million in new revenue to the district. And then, the Section 31A, the at-risk, a sizable chunk, because we're currently at $1.7 million, so that would take us to about $2.1 million in at-risk dollars maybe in next year. So, more of our budget elements. Obviously, we've talked enrollment many times here. The enrollment estimates are critical coming in 1920. The board heard previous meeting, and the Finance Ops Committee also heard, that our trendline continues to be down per fence, nothing's changing. It's flattening, it's not as steep as it used to be. For 1819, current year we're in, we've got an out, we've got a blip, we're up about 50 students, 30 students from last year's calendar. So, what we're trying to figure out, and looking at all the detail, is, will that be sustainable? Did we stop earlier? Did we finally flatten, or are we going to continue? Our feeling is, we're going to continue, we're just not going to be at the 70 to 100 meaning we've been averaging, and you'll see back reflected in the budget estimates here. The Section 147 is huge. We could spend all night on this. I'm going to try to put it in two sentences. Section 147 is the state's accounting methodology to support the unfunded accrued liability to the state's retirement system for school districts. That represents $1.3 billion coming out of the school aid fund right off the top. So, we see a lot of money come in on our state aid status report, and five days later, we've got to cut the check back to the state, because the state is using that to fund the unfunded liability in the pension system. The good news is, they're going to continue that. There's no guarantee, and the Constitution has to be continued, so we're, every year, very delicate, worried about, will they shift it into the rate? And you'll see the rate here later, it's still going up, but these dollars are huge. That $1.3 billion, they grew about $150 this year, it's been growing ever from about 250. This year is the smallest of three years of that's grown. And that's based on actual own numbers that the state does in order to figure out what they need to fund that. You've seen this slide before from me. I show this because it's about the simplest way to show at our current students, and if we use $150, then we handle our preliminary model as a decrease for next year. We're going to be shy just $1.2 million in revenue from current funding levels. We need $236 per student increase in the foundation allowance next year. The governor's proposed $180. So, we're hopeful the Senate or the House will be higher, one that much lower, and maybe the last, the 180 close to the 200. The good news is, it's higher than it's been other than last year for the last three years. So, I'm optimistic it's going to stay probably in the 150, 200 range by the time we're done. Expenditures, there's a lot of expenditure set. So, the wages, we've been working on this for the last couple bargaining sessions over the last two to four years, a couple cycles of our contracts with our bargaining units. And so, our wages are more predictable than they were five, six years ago. That's better for us for predicting what we need in order to balance the budget every year. MIPS, though, as I just mentioned, the increase is a 1.2% increase in the rate, it's a 3.4 increase. It's about $330,000 to us. So, for payroll starting October 1, 2019, for every dollar of payroll that we pay on an individual in the MIT and the basic, which are the majority of our members still, we pay 39.71% or cents into the retirement system. That's on top of the $1.3 billion I just mentioned. So, this rate, you watch that very closely, because this rate could continue to skyrocket if the state stops taking money out of the school aid fund off the top and funding that unfunded liability and putting it right into upfront cost to the district. Healthcare, we don't see anything unusual coming up in healthcare. Things have settled down in that neighborhood for the last couple of years, and it looks like it's going to stay that way for the next year or two, which is good. Those increases are limited to CPIs, CPI has been running the 2% to 3% range. That's where the state has the cap that keeps growing, and every time that cap's run in the 2% to 3% range, it's approximately a $100,000 increase in our expenditure lines for benefits. Here's a big one, field transportation costs. So, the governor's proposal, she's calling for 45 cent tax increase on gas. There's a lot of moving pieces to this, because currently on gas is the 6% sales tax. And what is not specified, and we're worried about, is the 6% sales tax is going to go away, the 45 cents, along with the current 27 cents, so 71 cents gas tax, will go on gasoline. That'll fund the roads, her proposal, fix the roads. The problem is, it doesn't help the general fund, the school aid fund, that use sales tax. Sales tax is about 60% of the revenue to the school aid fund. So, there's moving pieces, as I mentioned, and there's concern, because we haven't really seen where everything's going to settle out. That gas tax also is subject to legislation that was passed last year, that, starting in 2022, goes up to the cost of living, CPI. So, that 71 cents, if not the state 71 cents, it's going to grow. And if we continue to have inflationary times, it will grow a lot faster than people are thinking it's going to grow. We continue to talk capital, capital is really a force though, because it is making our buildings and facilities in a state that's not only healthy, but also viable, and doesn't cause tremendous outlays of current cash, because we don't have that much cash in order to replace roofs, boilers, et cetera, ongoing in the basis, as we've talked ten times, the buses, for instance, where we've taken back from replacing with eight to four buses for the last five years. And we always watch utilities, because that's another area in the economy and the state where the utilities have gone to try to uncap the cost and allow more market-driven pricing, and that's concerned to us. So, this is a snapshot of the pro forma budget that Finance Ops saw last week. Very simple, there's a lot more to this, but essentially, if you focus on the 1819, where we're at, we're estimating that we're going to finish the year roughly at $100,000 operating deficits, or just nicking into our fund balance. If history repeats itself, the last two to three years, we don't spend all of our budget that's been allotted, and so we're hoping that will end positively again, like it did in 1718, just above $200,000 contributing to fund balance, and we're hoping that will be that case for 1819. If you go into 1920, very flimmer, so the enrollment using $150 students down, foundation allowance using $100 increase. So, this was done last week before we had any hints of the governor's release yesterday in speech last night. Salaries and the benefits, the total expenditure, salaries being the largest component of our expenditures, but the benefits, and that's health, the retirement, et cetera, that fills in about another $15 million of that balance, $25 million gets you to $51 million. So, we're watching all those moving parts, rough, very rough estimate of roughly operating deficit of about $700,000. So, now, if I factor in extra $80 for the governor's 180, and factor in the extra $300 for the retirement, I'm still at the 690. So, this cycle will go on for the next two months, but we will be looking at all of our individual lines, looking at all the proposals, Senate House, seeing where this moves to come up with a good estimate and final budget for the board in May. So, next Monday, March 11th, we have our first Budget Manager meeting, so we'll be sharing this information with the Budget Managers from all of our units. We'll also be soliciting and asking them for input. We have an input sheet, so we go through a process of getting their inputs, very preliminary, as Chris Novak said, we don't have the other two parts of the triangle, so we're kind of at a loss. Are we going to stay relatively healthy? And one would say, well, that operating deficit is not healthy. That is better shape than we've been in recent years, so we are excited about that, and hope that will hold. We then will continue to watch in April for those other two legislative bodies, keep a keen eye in May for the third week for the Revenue Conference, make sure nothing changes. Why do you say what changes? Well, the big thing by then is, they have enough of the input tax returns turned in, so they know where they're going. They also have now nine months of debt on the sales tax revenue, you kind of see where the revenues for the year are on track. And if they're 2020, predictions are going to hold. So, we're going to bring into the board in June, the final budget for adoption. Further questions?
Mark, we used $150 students to bind, but I thought you said something about $30,000 student, huh?
Yes.
So, why is there difference here?
Well, that's the forecast number versus the current. Our current calendar has us up 30, and we have forecasted to be down 107 for this current year.
Right.
So, we discussed that for our first budget development process, that was in February, February meeting. Or this year's enrollment was included on the screen compared to the last, let's say, 15 years. We have to make the determination, from a forecast perspective, are we going to say, you know, estimate it will be up students again this year, or will the trendline hold?
At this point, just following the trendline.
Just follow the trendline, it's already softening a little bit, it won't be 180.
Stay on the safe side.
Right.
Because obviously, we need to see, can we absorb in our fund balance some reasonableness and projection for a forecast in that operating deficit, based on the numbers versus having it some large number, and then something, more students than our projected number. It goes back to 170 next year, we only do 150. So, we're always around the conservative side.
Go back to the table. And don't forget that those fund balance projections, that those numbers represent us doing nothing, making no cuts, making no decisions, just taking 100% out of the deficit out of the fund balance, which obviously doesn't happen, but it just gives you a forecast projection.
Board goal is 10%?
10%.
And then, technically, with this budget, state's on, I just want to clarify, state budget year is October to September, right?
Correct.
So, technically, they don't have to have numbers done until September 30th, right?
They have the same constitution by their beginning of their fiscal year, have to adopt a budget.
So, we could go into the school year, really?
We could.
It's happened before.
But it's happened before, but I believe, I always saw excerpts, I believe, the governor did state her wishes still to try to get something, as the prior administration has done for the last eight years, to add a budget, or at least budget, general fund, school aid fund by June 1st, so.
But to your point, we would have to make some, if we have in the past, just some really good best guesses.
And when there's controversy, that's been so, that's what happens.
Well, I don't, yeah.
In the past, that's what's happened.
There's, I don't think anybody's surprised that, even if it's an administration for eight years, and a handoff to a new administration, there's going to be gaps and delays and this kind of thing. That's not a surprise to any of us.
Other questions?
Well, just a comment, the last chart we had up just shows that you have to change structural costs. A lot of these things are beyond our control.
Correct.
So, we have to live with those, we have to change what we can change in order to, you know, to stay profitable, change in structural costs.
When you start talking about, you know, reduction of, well, the over a million dollars is our estimate right now of operational costs we could reduce with the reconfiguration, that's, those are real dollars that impact, you know, the budget forecast process, we've got to reduce the amount of money that are fixed costs for us moving forward here. You have no choice.
I think that's important to communicate, that loss, and then maybe what preliminary things would happen. Because I think people need to know, if this doesn't pass, what is going to happen? You can say it all you want, but they don't know the steps, like actually, if this is going to close, these class sizes are going to go up, people can't make this decision. So, I think we need some details, I guess.
Oh, without question. And the whole idea that continuing to put money into aging facilities that we already identified for closure is our biggest barrier. To get the committee to support that again would be difficult.
Well, and it's always been, as we've mentioned in this process, it's either death by 1,000 cuts, or we're trying to get out of the market. And so, we've done the death, 1,000 cuts for a long time. Will you reiterate one more time? I don't think people really understand. I'm really tired of politicians telling me, we give you more dollars for education, and we give you more. And then, gee, what do you do? You come out and you say, well, that's true, but 40 cents of every dollar goes immediately direct to the state. And that's the part I don't, when I talk to folks, they don't really seem to understand that. And when I say that, they know that you're right, but it's right.
Yes. So, when Danielle, myself, Kim, when we're working and trying to put together the finances either for collect bargain, whatever, you start to look at 40 cents for retirement, 7.56 for FICA, Medicare. And if you factor in percent, and it's hard, because it's moved with the healthcare and the caps and stuff, you're looking for about every dollar now of salary, we're paying about 75 to 80 cents between retirement, social security, Medicare required, and our benefits. 25 years ago, 30 years ago, that number was 22, 24% total. To include that far, we're going to have to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We're going to begin with consent voting, and then the approval of the minutes, February 6, for every meeting. Approval of the minutes of February 14, special meeting, and a couple of overnight press calls, one for the E Club students, Ellen Zoo, the other is the USA students, the Grand Rapids.
Do you, you're saying?
Oh, the consent voting.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Bell.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Hagman.
Aye.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Next, we have bond resolution.
I'll make that motion, that resolution rates for preliminary qualifications for the proposed bond should be a purpose of demand.
Bond resolution, that resolution raised, according to qualification, the proposed line should be a first amendment.
That moved, and you supported, or are there any questions on the motion? Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mr. Hagman.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mrs. Viva.
No.
And that moves us to the fourth session, to express the evaluation. All motion that we move to, full session? Court. Mrs. Viva?
Yes.
Mrs. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Novak.
Aye.
Mr. Hagman.
Aye.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mr. Keller, sorry, I'm curious.